To the Monmouth City Council meeting for Tuesday, December 5th. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And have a little call please, Phillips?
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Present.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Counselor Steinkie.
Here.
Mayor Milligan.
Here. We have the council minutes from November 21st and the council work session minutes from the 21st. Two of approval of both. Sorry to that.
If I could just make one comment, I think at the previous meeting I clarified that, or Mayor Milligan clarified, that Blackbird is a marijuana retail establishment.
Where is that located? Just on the regular meeting minutes. Necessary second accepts the change. Good one. Okay. So with that correction to the mayor's notes, all those in favor, seeing as why we're saying aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All righty. That passes. And now, we'd like to recognize some of our employees. One of the things that I think says a lot about an organization is the staying power of its employees. And tonight, we've got quite a few awards. And we'll start with five years for Billy Black. I have a couple comments to read here. Billy came to the city of Monmouth Public Works, let's see. This sentence always, I was going to rewrite this before I got here. Billy came to the city of Monmouth Public Works his last year at Clackamas Community College when he was enrolled in the Water Environment Technologies Program. Billy was hired as the wastewater specialist and received his degree that first year while employed with the city. Billy took ownership of the city's wastewater treatment facility and ran the affluent refuge facility. Billy has learned a lot over the past five years. We look forward to many more years of service. Mike Gregory started with the electric industry in 1989 as an apprentice lineman through the Northwest Joint Apprenticeship and Training Committee. After completing three and a half years of schooling and on-the-job training, Mike earned his journeyman lineman certification. In 1996, Mike joined the city of Ashland as a lineman and was promoted to line foreman, serving in the capacity for over nine years. During his lifetime, Mike and his wife Kathy raised their two sons in their Medford home. Currently, Mike and his wife Kathy raise cows, chickens, peacocks, I think some of those came from North Sacredry, through Kings Valley Highway and Airly Road, keeping them both very busy. Mike enjoys hunting, fishing, and is an accomplished bowler, having bowled a perfect score, congratulations, last year, I didn't quite get that far yet, Starlight Lanes in Dallas. Mike started with Power and Light on December 3rd, 2012, as a line foreman. He is a very conscientious, considerate, and knowledgeable employee. Mike leads a team of linemen that are as committed as it takes to keep the power on for the customers of Monmouth Power and Light. Join me in thanking Mike for his five years of dedicated service to the city of Monmouth. Does Kelly hear you? So I'll just read this. One of the other things that's kind of fun, I've been up here at the DICE for quite a few years, so Kelly got to see sworn in. There's her next one. So it's been fun watching the employees as they come in and stay and go forward. So Detective Kelly Carpenter began working full-time for the Monmouth Police Department April 2007. Prior to that, Kelly served as, for one year, as a Polk County Corrections Technician and also as a Polk County Reserve Deputy for almost two years. During the past 10 years, Kelly has served as both a patrol officer and a detective. Kelly has taken on several additional duties over the last 10 years that include serving as the field training officer, TASER, and OC instructor? Pepper spray. Huh?
Yes.
Okay, but what does OC stand for?
Pepper spray.
Oh, the pepper spray, okay. And also a peer-to-peer investigator. During her off time, she also serves as training coordinator for Oregon Peace Officers Association. Detective Carpenter is a member of the Child and Adult Multidisciplinary Team, Polk County Threat Assessment Team, Sexual Assault Response Team, and the Polk County Major Crimes Team, serving as an investigator. She has assisted other agencies with several felony cases in addition to investigating and solving many cases here in Monmouth. Because of her strong work ethic and passion for protecting young children, Detective Carpenter received Monmouth Police Department's Officer of the Year for 2010. In continuation of her efforts to protect children, this past spring, Kelly put together the first annual Craft with the Cop event held at Monmouth PD in an effort to help promote awareness during Child Abuse Prevention Month. Detective Carpenter lives in Monmouth with her husband and two children. The city of Monmouth is very fortunate to have Kelly serving as a police officer, and I know I'll look forward to many more years of her service to our community. And our next one is again for 10 years, and this is Scott McLeur. Scott McLeur has served as the city manager just shy of 11 years, having been hired January 9th, 2007. He brought with him a great deal of knowledge and experience from previous city manager jobs. Under Scott's guidance, the city has accomplished more projects in 11 years than the past 30 years while maintaining the city's financial position. Scott is a past president of the Oregon Municipal Electric Utility Board. He is a member of the CIS, that's City-County Insurance Services, chairman of the Smith Fine Arts Board, and a member of the West Valley Hospital Board. He is actively involved in the community. Scott is on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce and regularly attends Monmouth Business Association meetings. Scott is also a member of Robery and served two years as president. He is a great asset to our city. And another 10 years. That's amazing, it's been fun to watch this stable group of employees here. Officer Mark Robertson began working full-time with Monmouth Police Department in January 2007. Prior to that, Mark worked in the music retail business and then for a short time as a correctional officer for the Oregon Department of Corrections. Officer Robertson maintains a strong work ethic and often ranks at the top in terms of activity level among officers. He writes a lot of tickets, helps out the community. Mark's passion is removing dangerous and impaired drivers from Monmouth's roadway. He serves as an instructor for standard field sobriety testing, and he is a certified drug recognition expert. Mark is highly skilled and is called upon to perform DRE evaluations for officers working in Polk, Marion, and Yamhill Counties. Additionally, Officer Robertson serves as a field training officer, an Oregon physical agilities test instructor, and he administers the annual seatbelt grant. Officer Robertson is Mr. Consistent at Monmouth PD. He has a superior work ethic, he rarely takes time off, and is always willing and able to work extra or fill in for the police department when the police department is short-staffed. We're very grateful for Mark's dedication and service to the citizens of Monmouth. Again, thanks for your opinion. And another 10 years, Sergeant Michael Strack. Sergeant Michael Strack began working full-time with Monmouth Police Department in October of 2007. Prior to that, he served as a Monmouth Reserve Officer for 10 years and also worked for a short period as the ordinance enforcement officer for Adair Village. Sergeant Strack is a very dedicated employee, serving over the past 10 years as a patrol officer, persons and property crimes detective, and detective assigned to Polk County Interagency Narcotics Team, and as the newest sergeant supervising night shift patrol. His sergeant duties include tracking fleet and building maintenance, completing employee performance evaluations, handling citizen complaints, and organizing the police department's role during large and special events. In addition to those duties, he also has assisted in setting up and maintaining the mobile data terminals in the patrol cars and downloading information and maintaining the department's AED units. Mike and his wife live in Monmouth, have three children. He cares about the community and is always patient and willing to listen to the citizens he serves. We're fortunate to have Sergeant Strack on our team. And there's another one for 10 years, but John Steve thought he might make it before the end of the meeting, so we'll wait and see if he gets here. And now, moving up 15 years, Wendy Ham. Wendy began as Monmouth's court clerk in August of 2002. Her position handles all the day-to-day municipal court-related activities for the city, including a minimum three Wednesdays per month in court supporting Judge McCann's depositions, and as well as occasional jury for less frequent criminal trials when they occur. Over the last 15 years, Wendy has processed over 25,000 cases. She manages all the detail related to court preparations and processing each week. She is a technical expert in her field and has received high praise from the judge and attorneys with whom she works in the courtroom each week. She assisted with the implementation of two new municipal court software systems in each of 2007 and 2014, and continues to test and explore the capabilities of the latest conversions to streamline and improve efficiencies. Her recent accomplishments include getting caught up on some long overdue projects left by previous incumbents such as closing out all cases more than 10 years old, submitting all overdue fines for collections, and completing a full case review of all active warrants to ensure they are verified by the police department-led system and jail originals. We very much appreciate her 15 years of contribution to the city and particularly the municipal court operations. And now for 20 years, Chief Talon. Chief Darrell Talon began his employment with Monmouth Police Department in August of 1997 after serving for nine years in Independence. He has served as chief of police for the past 15 years. Chief Talon is responsible for the overall operations of the police department. More especially, he is responsible for planning, direction of personnel, assignment of duties and responsibilities, and development and management of the budget. He also serves on a number of professional and community-based committees in order to maintain a positive working relationship with neighboring law enforcement agencies and the citizens of our communities. Chief Talon has been working to further the professionalism of the Monmouth Police Department over the last several years by updating policies and procedures, updating and adding new equipment, and expanding the training program for officers. His goals include working toward becoming a state-accredited agency and to provide the citizens of Monmouth a safe community by delivering the best police services through well-trained and highly professional officers. Thank you, Chief Talon, for 20 years. Ed is an integral piece of the Monmouth Public Works team. Ed has a vast knowledge of many of the aspects of the job, street sweeping, mechanic, concrete guru, master woodworker, and the list keeps going. Most people don't know Ed personally, but they feel they know him by seeing him in the street sweeper for the past 25 years. Ed's teammates look on him for his knowledge and assistance quite often. Monmouth is very fortunate to have Ed as part of the public works team. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. All right, that brings us to the mayor's report. I don't have a whole lot to report on since there wasn't much that I was involved in with city business, but this past Friday night was the 50th anniversary of the tree lighting at Western Oregon University. It was quite well-attended. I have no idea what the count was, but it had to be 2,000 or there, including Santa, who made an appearance. And it was really fun being there. For the first time, I got to be up and make some comments, but it was fun listening to the girls read their essays and then turn the lights on. I hope the person who the ambulance had to show up for made it okay. I haven't heard back on that, but it was a little interesting experience in the middle of it. For boards and commission appointments, there are three that I'd like to make. Jesse Schaefer for Parks and Recs, James Maznov for the Historic Commission, and Judith Mall for Arts and Culture. I have a motion second. I approve of all three. I would second. So that's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Mayor Milligan, if I may, Judy Mall asked me if I would read a statement for her.
Okay.
And this is from Judy Mall, it's not from me. "I thank Mayor Milligan and others involved in the selection process for approving my application to serve on the Arts and Culture Commission. I look forward to working with other members of the commission to bring a variety of art and cultural experiences to the city of Monmouth. Judy Mall."
And with that, we'll proceed to council representative, or reports from councilors on boards and commissions. Counselor Silvernagle?
Great, thank you. On November 28th, the Monmouth Senior Advisory Board met. It was Sue Teal's last meeting with us and moving into retirement. Barbara Hogan was there also, so the new center director, so it was a good exchange there at the meeting. Only a couple of things I'd mention. They're going to do another meet and greet. They have 17 members since their, new members that have come on since their last meet and greet, so they're planning to do one January 17th, at least tentatively. And the WOU Psychology Club is planning to do a waffle fundraiser, and that will allow them to then put on a sock hop with the seniors. I think the sock hop's going to be in February, and the waffle fundraiser will be shortly after, and they were thinking potentially early April. They had a great turnout for the meeting, and our next one is, they moved it up to December
Counselor Johnson?
Two meetings we had were the 1st and the 15th, so there hasn't been one since the last meeting. How does that sound?
Okay. Counselor Sharmar?
I gave a report for the tree board last meeting, you want me to read the minutes?
No, no, that's okay.
But I can reemphasize that we had a lot of help from the WU men's lacrosse team, and we were out there with Russ Cooper too, and planted 18 oak trees in 18 minutes.
All right. Counselor Carey?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the MINET board met on November 30th, and the things that came from that, a wide range of discussion, but a couple of things that I think are of note. October, operating income returned to the levels of the spring, $150,000. You know, reported last time, I think, that there was a bit of a dip because of the fact that the university residents halted and not opted for the video package. So that was a little bit unexpected, but nonetheless, the revenues were back to the sort of pre-summer level, so that's encouraging, again reflecting the stability that is the current company. In December of 16, MINET contributed about roughly 34% of the debt, and the cities picked up the remaining 66%. This year, 1217, MINET's going to contribute 59% of that debt, and the cities will be backfilling the remaining 41% of that. So that's certainly progress and moving forward. They, there's anticipation that MINET will be rolling out a texting application, smartphone texting application, that would allow them to provide reminders on anything that needs to be reminded of, including due date for payment, past payments, any other notifications. They would be able to communicate if they had an outage, that sort of thing, kind of a modern way of communicating for those that opt to do that. That will be an option for them, I think it'll be a positive one. The exact date they'll roll that out, I don't know that they've got that. I'm anticipating near the first of the year. There was a failure in the voicemail system. There's difficult to tell exactly how many people are affected by that. There are about 750 potential users of that, and it was a hardware failure. They just, you know, it's equipment we've been, they have been talking about, and I've been recounting to you that there's, you know, that there's a need to protect refresh, and this is an example of that. They, as their want to do, they put information on that voicemail system failure on their website, which some were able to pick up and others didn't know that. They don't really have a good notification system to get to everyone on that. They struggled a bit with that, but they have been sort of backfilling. It took them about, I don't know, four or five days to be able to get the new hardware in, and that should be up and running now. Anyway, it was unfortunate, but that's what, that's what happens with aging equipment. We did have some discussion on the issue, which is sort of a national discussion as well, and that's the company's position on net neutrality. As you're aware, the FCC is considering sort of doing away with the longstanding, fairly longstanding position in that commission for net neutrality, and the board has decided that it will take the recommendation from management and to that when the FCC acts. I mean, they may, they may not. They may leave it as it is, if that's the case, it will remain as we are. The, MINET has maintained a position in support of net neutrality since it's been discussed. So if there is a change at the FCC level, which would affect our competitors and so forth, then the company will make some decisions relative to that, but they're pretty, the staff people are pretty committed to maintaining the current level of neutrality on that, not changing very, you know, cost or speed, all that sort of thing. Anyway, that's a whole lot of information about something I know little about, so that concludes my report. Again, moving back, you said that MINET will pick up 59% this year? Okay. This, this period. This half? Yes. Okay. Yes. In the December payment, which has been paid, they will pick up 59%, as compared to 34%. Yeah. In that same time period, year over year.
Counselor Steinkie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, fellow councilors, the Monmouth Traffic Safety Commission met last night, and there were several issues that were discussed and dealt with. There's been a request for additional lighting on the west side of 99 West at the Madrona Street crosswalk. I know we've all been very concerned about that. They, we are going to be talking to Power and Light about the possibility of getting a traffic light there at the west side to aid with visibility of that crosswalk. They have looked into the cost of placing an LED display speed sign on Warren Street at the city limits for the incoming traffic. They're not going to move forward on that yet because, in a related matter, the city is, or the police department is purchasing a traffic data collection device, and I believe it was discussed last meeting. Essentially, it's a movable device that records the speed of traffic, the number of vehicles, the times of day, to try to identify trends of speeding or high traffic. And the intention of that is to guide either signage, or enforcement, or other traffic improvements. And so, it will likely be used there at Warren Street at some point. There are numerous places that are calling for its use, but to determine if the traffic is coming in at speeds that would warrant the $2,000 to $5,000 investment it would take to put up the LED display sign there. I do have a number of the flyers about this device. It just, it's a terrific, it's a terrific advance in figuring out where to do traffic enforcement and so forth. This doesn't write tickets or anything, it just tells the police. I'll pass these down, and then they can be available to the public after the meeting. A very fine gentleman from Western Oregon University, Mr. Silvernagle, was there to request that we reduce the posted speed to 20 miles per hour on sections of Stadium Drive North. North and Church Street West going through the campus. The final result after the discussion is that Public Works is going to draft a department, a report to the council with recommendations. Generally, the consensus was that it's a good idea to have 20 mile an hour zones on streets that are bordered, portions of streets that are bordered by university on both sides, but when we get to where there's city on one side to maintain the 25. And so anyway, that's gonna be coming our way in the near future. And last item, Royall had mentioned the idea of going to monthly traffic safety. Oh, by month. And the consensus was, we're gonna continue with the quarterly meetings, but the council should know that we're always open to special meetings as needed, or, you know, Mr. City Manager, if there's something you think that we ought to, we can, we don't need much notice, whatever the required notice would be, we're happy to meet any time. So that's the conclusion of my report on the Traffic Safety Commission meeting.
Right, thanks.
Can I ask one quick question? When you set a traffic light, can you give us some clarification on how that is?
Yeah, this is a light that is, it's radar operated, and it, it tells the car that is coming into town what speed it's going, and it will also have a sign right there that says what the speed limit is. And I happen to drive down a road every workday that has one of those, and I'm coming into it 55, and at that point slows to 40, and I tell you, it's a goal to hit 40 before I hit the sign. And it's a very wonderful calming device to reduce that, the speed as you hit a residential area. And so they'll put up the traffic data device to see if there is a problem there, and if so, they may go ahead and buy that sign.
And they're, and they are talking seriously about improving the lighting at that intersection?
That's at, yes, at the cross, yes.
That's 99 of Madrona, though, right?
Yes, 99 of Madrona, that. The other thing that was discussed, and I don't know what weather will permit, but that crosswalk needs to be re, they don't actually paint it, they melt down, what's it, plastic, I forget the name of the product, but it's more durable and reflective and visible crosswalk delineator.
Right, thanks. Any community announcements? Scott?
Yep.
Jay Manager, your part?
Yeah, thank you. If you're a reporter, I got, I got two good items and two not-so-good items, so I'll do the good ones first.
Just the bad ones first?
Yeah, I'll do the good ones. First one is Sue Teal had a retirement party, and it was a great function. They were smashed into the center. Originally, we had actually gaps on the interior, had to drop in more chairs, people weren't having control of finding parking places, but that was a great function. She got awards from the city, the senior advisory board, the friends board, and a neat one is actually the Lions International gave her the highest service award that they could get. That was, that was really pretty special. Second one, the bond refunding process. Those are our Minnet bonds, and we had some sewer bonds thrown in. That's been a fast process. Your finance director has done amazing work on this. Typically, you do like five or six weeks, which is pretty intense. We're doing it three right now, just to meet the deadline with, you know, tax code changes. And so it's gone really well. We have a good team on top of it. She's done a great job with diligence, just incredibly detailed, keeping track of every moving part in there. One part of it that is really important is, is the rating, so whatever you're rated at, that's what your interest rate's gonna be coded. And so a first step we did, we actually had a reading call with Standard &amp; Poor, and so Janet and I worked through their questions, presented, you know, Monmouth, our organization. With that, it was really nice, as our financial advisor was on the call, and a couple of people, and they said when we were done, they said, "You guys should really be proud of yourselves." He says, "Most organizations your size do not present this well," and that's including just that, but also all of our practices, what we do in the city. And so they said, "That's, you guys should really be commended for that." That translates into an extremely high rating, so we ended up getting an A-plus rating. Towns our size don't typically get that, towns even bigger than ours typically don't get to that level. Their kind of, their notes on there was one, that the good sides were a really good overall economy. That's, that's a strong point. Obviously, if you're really declining, that's, that doesn't look good, 'cause it doesn't make them feel good about people's ability to pay. Our management practices, budget flexibility, liquidity, very good. A couple of weak ones they noted was, we have had some drawdowns in a couple of our funds, so that was noted. And then from their metrics, our debt load's a little bit high. They think that's a little bit high on that side, but otherwise, really good shapes we're going in. Actually, Thursday is all the pricing, and we should know where we are there. And then, that's the, that's the last happy one. So now here's the two not-so-good. Highway 51 grant, a few years back, we actually got a grant, it was a 12, to redo Highway 51, and that would basically be heftily down to the S-curves. It would be full-blown, center turn lane, regular lane, bike path, sidewalk, everything in there. So it looked good in there. So they, they came back, and it was originally about $90,000 to $60,000. It went up to about 1.4, and they did a quick reassessment on it. We had the ODOT board out there yesterday, a couple of days ago, Russ and I met with them. We had 14 ODOT staff going through and looking at details. As soon as they looked at the project, it was like, wow, oh, that's gonna be difficult. Oh, how do we get this grade to work? Oh, that, and then they started going, oh, we're gonna have to chew into people's yards. Little comments like, yeah, we don't have a right of acquisition budget, and by the time they extrapolated, they're still doing design, but they said, you're, you're over $3 million on this. And the key part of that, which is a decision point for us, is we have a match involved. We have a match of around 11%, so you can just do the math and see what kind of dollars we're looking at, and that's very serious. So what they're doing right now is they're gonna take a first shot at design and do it full. Then you can start having discussions about, do you wanna do something different? Do you, do you lose the center turn pocket? They ask, what's most important? Is it the turn lane, or is it the sidewalks and the bike lane? What's, what's critical? You know, what kind of options do you have? So we're gonna have to see how all this plays out. A big one that throws into timing there is, we were having discussions about Warren Street, and whether we wanted to potentially use a lot of city money on that. I think we need to defer that discussion until we know what we're dealing with here, because you can't take it all there, and then we have nothing left for this project. So I think that, you know, Warren Street's there, it's not critical timing, so I think we can probably hold that, get a little better. They think they're gonna have some rough workforce in January, so it's pretty quick we can get that, so it wouldn't be much of a delay on that, so. But yeah, it was difficult just listening to their conversations. They were just looking at, it's hard, it's gonna be a hard project.
Yeah.
And, and also in there, other triggers, like we just had happen on Highway 99, utility line relocations, which is completely our, our cost, some other elements coming in there. So I'll have to think this one through, and I think it'll also be good to get input early from the community, just make those value judgments, is the turn pocket driving, is the sidewalks, you know, what are some options? And it's gonna take a little bit of time to sort through that, so. That was number one, and then another construction project, our Power and Light building, we finally got the bids back on that, and they came in $800,000 over budget. Like, wait, what's happening right now is contractors in the area are very busy, they do not need extra work, so the prices are accordingly, and then material prices are skyrocketing because of hurricanes and wildfires. So we are in a very poor environment right now for, for doing construction, so they've done some value engineering, trying to squeeze things down a little bit, do a little bit more work, probably in January also, we're gonna have to come back to you and discuss where to move forward on that project, or if we move forward on the project. So on that downer note, I will, I will be.
That brings us to citizen comments at this time. Here's your time for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda. A maximum of three minutes for item, please. Is there anyone who'd like to speak tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the business agenda, and our first one is the second reading and adoption of ordinance. So I will read that, my title, and ordinance adopting new provisions for the Monmouth City Code relating to utility licenses and work in the city right of way, and I declare that to be passed in the second reading. Is there any discussion? Do we have a motion? It's ordinance number 1377.
I have a second reading and adoption of ordinance 1377, adopting new code provisions relating to utility license and work in the city right of way.
Second. It's been moved in second, and any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Carey?
Aye.
Councillor Schinkel?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Councillor Stanky?
Aye.
Councillor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Councillor Sharma?
No.
All right, and that passes. And so now we'll move on to the next item, which is the utility license fee resolution.
Yeah, and just on this, so what you do is you have the structure you just passed, so that went through, and then now you actually have to set the rates for the various, for the various utilities that are in there. And so if you go to the resolution itself, you stair step, we've got a couple of different figures, a lot of these are actually tied to what federal limits are. So in a case of like, you know, internet or phone, you can do 7%. Cable's actually capped at 5. You know, the same deal of like, natural gas is 7. There's a couple of different levels of, so what that would do is establish those basic fees, and then so when the ordinance goes into effect, we give them, you know, here's the new fee structure, and then that's what they were remitting to us.
All right, and this would be Resolution 1854.
And these rates are comparable to what we have in our franchise.
Yeah. Yeah, no change there.
Are you ready for a motion?
Oh, I'm ready for a motion. Okay. Then I would move approval of Resolution 1854, a resolution refreshing certain fees and rates related to utility license fees and other charges.
Second. It's been moved in second, and any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, goes.
Councillor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Councillor Schinkel?
Yes.
Councillor Sharma?
No.
Councillor Carey?
Aye.
Councillor Stanky?
Aye.
Councillor Johnson?
Aye.
And that passes. That brings us to council comments. Any councillors with comments?
I do. Coming into town, driving up Main Street, congratulations to the city crews for making that a very festive, I wasn't at the tree lighting, but a very festive entrance into town, and can't help but giving a shout out to Pedals &amp; Bines for having a pretty nice display. Good for you.
So to tell on to that, the one piece from last Friday night that I didn't mention was the parade. And from what I understand, it was the most participants in the tree lighting parade since it started, and so that was exciting to see a lot more people participating. Like I said, it was amazing when I walked over, the number of people that were there lining the streets and ready for the parade and ready for the lights, and I will apologize for something I said at the, at the lighting, because I was undercover, and I had gotten there when it hadn't started raining yet, and I made a compliment on how great the weather was, while everyone was standing out there in a sprinkle. So apologize to those of you that I got the weather wrong.
Thank you. I was there delighted, and it was really turned out to a lot of people there, too. You know, the only thing that I heard out of it, and I don't know how we get it out better, but what was the, how was, you know, what time was the parade? What really was gonna happen? You know, the, well, we had the 50 sticker on a lot of doors, and this is the 50th deal, and even in Independence, they had them on the doors, which is a great deal for the businesses. But that was only some, some people asked, well, what's next, or what's happening here? Or, you know, I know it's hard to get information out, but I didn't look at the website, it's college radio, it was all on that website, I don't know. But I told you, look at the college website next time, and see where it was. It was great, a lot of people, and yeah, it was raining. You're all wet.
All right. Any more comments? With that, I'm gonna read the script for an executive session. What we're gonna do is we're gonna, I'll read this, we'll reset this meeting to go to our work session, and then when our work session is over, we'll come back to our regular session, and then go into executive session, and, and then move on from there. So this asks people to leave the room, but you don't need to leave the room yet, this will be after we do our work session. So December 5th, 2017, the city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiation consultations and consider, consideration of exempt public records and trade secrets, and performance evaluation of public officers and employees. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192 6602D, Labor Negotiator Consultations, and ORS 192 6601F, Consideration of Exempt Public Records, and ORS 192 5012, Trade Secrets, and ORS 192 6602I, Performance Evaluation of Public Officers and Employees, which allows the council to meet in executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff or other persons may be allowed to attend the executive session, with the exception of the portion of the meeting concerning exempt public records and trade secrets. All other members of the audience may be asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will turn to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. And now, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, if you could circle back, we had the one employee that we missed on the board, if you could have that read into the record.
Oh, sure.
Didn't think we're back.
And John Stead was another one of our 10-year employees, and John joined the city of Monmouth Finance Department in June of 20, of 2007, as the Finance Operations Manager. His master's degree in information and systems, and his wealth of experience with data verification have stood him in good stead throughout the, his career here with the city. Not only did he assist the city's conversion to a new finance and utility building software in 2007, he assisted with yet another software conversion in 2014 to the city's current financial system, Casell. Two recent achievements in the area of financial database management, where John was, has excelled, include running a variety of what-if scenarios on employee healthcare benefits to help the city manager assess the cost benefit of several different options available that would hopefully leave employees whole for the level of benefits, but also remain within budget for the city. And two, providing an in-depth numerical analysis of city employees' workers' compensation codes, payments and claims as part of the intensive triennial audit that municipalities must undertake for the state. Our contact there has indicated that the data submitted was among the cleanest and most accurate as of any reporting that has previously received. And if you thought that was hard for me to read, it was probably really hard for John to accomplish, and thanks for John's work on that. Day-to-day, John continues to perform reconciliations, verifications, and process monthly payroll. His significant capabilities with Excel have served to increase the capacity of our, of other finance staff, as well as streamline operations. John also did an excellent job as interim finance director in recent months between the departure of Mark Denmeyer and the arrival of Janet Shinard. His experience from this and past accounting work will be even more utilized in the future as he will be assisting the new finance director with more of the city's audit and budget functioning, functions in the coming months. John is an absolute asset to the city of Monmouth, and his contributions over the past 10 years have been much appreciated by both his former and current supervisor. past ten years have been much appreciated by both his former and current supervisor, as well as other city employees and customers with whom he has had dealings. And again, I want to thank John Stead for his ten years of service. So now I'll accept the motion to adjourn, or to recess the work session. So we'll recess the work session. Second? All those in favor, so you can probably say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we'll convene at the back of the room for the work session.